All right, we can rock and roll. I'm sure that our colleagues will join us. I gave them ample warning and timing on the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Administrator, I know that item number 21 is... was delayed from the previous meeting. We'll continue to go through our general business and move on to our public hearings.
Public hearings first.
Public hearing first, that's right, because it was scheduled. My bad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 30 is your first and only public hearing to consider proposed resolution adopting an inventory list of county-owned properties appropriate for affordable housing pursuant to Florida statutes. And pursuant to our own real estate policy, commissioners, we work off this list with our community partners, including the HFA, to ensure that we make these parcels available for affordable housing opportunities. As discussed in a separate item or actually a preceding item, this will now include the community land trust. So with that, commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions you might have. We have no speakers on this side.
All right, item 30. A motion has been made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Deluge. Commissioner Minor, are you still in queue? Or was that from...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Minor, please.
Thank you very much. I'd like to add an amendment to the motion, basically providing two of the parcels with negotiation from county staff to the Habitat for Humanity organization, and an additional two parcels for Habitat Humanities Veterans Build Program, which you may have read about on Friday, which is basically helping to work toward providing veterans with affordable housing opportunities.
I'm going to let Commissioner Deluge.
Actually, we don't determine... we just basically say, "These are available," and then we let the housing authorities sit down and say, "Where's the most appropriate fit?" And Habitat's certainly in the mix on all of that. And then we would... so it's not as though we dictate or determine, "Here's who we think it should go to. Here's a pool of properties that should be used or will be used, in this case, for affordable housing." And then what happens is Habitat says, "Well, these five are the most appropriate for us because they meet the neighborhoods and size, and we'd like those." And then they can say, "We'd like to use these for the veterans version of Habitat." Or somebody might come in and say, "We think there's another way to do it." They self-select, I think, don't they?
Yes, and we'll be happy to facilitate that process with them.
My understanding is that I think, at least in some cases, HFA has requested funds from Habitat for those...
Oh, no, I don't... I'm not aware of them. They're selling them to Habitat?
No.
No? You guys have not heard that before?
Good question, though. No, I think it would just be a transfer of property.
Okay. That was knowing that, or at least coming to that understanding, was a reason why I wanted to go ahead and offer those up to four parcels up, working with county staff and Habitat to negotiate those. But so long as HFA is providing those parcels to Habitat without any, you know, funds, I think I'm fine with that.
All right.
I'll withdraw my motion for amendment.
Okay. Going back on the original motion on item number 30, motion was made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion passes. We'll move on to item 31 under public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is a public hearing to transmit an out-of-cycle text amendment to the comp plan to provide consistency on the issue of solar energy systems with the county ordinance that immediately precedes this item, and of which you may know that we are recommending that we continue. And so with that, we have no speakers on this item. Obviously, this item will allow us to put this out-of-cycle amendment in the queue, so to speak, and both the ordinance and the amendment will marry back up together in September so that we can ensure consistency.
Move continues, Mr. Chairman.
I've got one speaker... sorry, one speaker on the item as well.
Okay. We'll hear our speaker, if you don't mind. Commissioner Proctor.
Neil Fleckenstein.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. Neil Fleckenstein, Tall Timbers Research Station, 13093 Henry Beetle Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. Great to be here again. Just wanted to provide a little input on this, the solar amendment. The last month, we've been dealing extensively in solar issues in counties in southwest Georgia, specifically in Brooks County, where right now we're seeing a 700-acre solar facility going in, and a proposal for an adjacent 1,700-acre solar facility to join that. We've also been dealing with this in Thomas County, Grady County, Decatur County, City of Camilla, et cetera, really being kind of inundated with massive utility-scale solar facilities. So I think it's kind of... I think it's important to understand sort of the regional context of what's happening in our area and some of the unintended consequences that we're seeing in rural areas. So I'll go through this real quick and happy to answer questions after this. This is a shot of the site going in right now in Brooks County. This one is the 700-acre site that's currently being developed in a rural area. If you look kind of in the back, you can kind of see the tree line there. That entire tree line is a 1,700-acre adjacent parcel that's going to be clear-cut to join this parcel, so to be about a 2,500-acre solar facility. The concern that we have, among others, is this is very much the kind of facility we could be looking at here in Leon County. What you see in the foreground is basically their version of about a 10-foot buffer, which is what the proposed ordinance, that's, I guess, being continued, proposes here. So this is just kind of sort of a visual of what we're seeing in some other areas. Just a comparison of the scale. On the left is the proposed solar facility in Brooks. On the right is the Tallahassee Airport. Solar facility is a little bit larger. Again, kind of the inundation that we're seeing, I've been talking to our large landowners who are being inundated with offers from solar companies, private solar companies, to try and get their land locked up for these facilities. It's not an issue of a 20-acre, 50-acre, 70-acre facility. It's the 300, 500, 1,000-acre facility, which has a significant impact on rural character and rural natural resources. So a couple of questions that I've got. We've got the definition of rural and the rural land use category there. It's a category to promote agriculture, silviculture, and natural resource-based activities, and to protect scenic vistas and pastoral development patterns in Leon County. That image of the Brooks County facility could easily be a Leon County facility, and my question would be, is that consistent with what we think of as our rural environment and the rural land use category? Second question I have is, in the proposed amendment, solar energy systems will be allowed in rural, subject to design standards that preserve the rural character of the area. The current proposed ordinance requires a 10-foot vegetated buffer on a 50-foot setback. I don't think in any way, shape, or form, a 10-foot vegetated buffer similar to what we have here is really going to protect the character of rural areas. Again, our neighboring counties have been dealing with this. Right now, Thomas County is under their second moratorium to make sure that they develop policy that protects the character of that community. Grady County was under a moratorium before. We'll be proposing one in Brooks County, just to kind of call a timeout and make sure we're developing policies that do allow these uses to move forward, but in a way that protects the character of these communities. In the same sense, I think, you know, the commission here and your great staff have worked with Keep It Rural on important rural issues, having talked with a couple of the Keep It Rural folks today. No one has any idea this amendment is moving through. It's an out-of-cycle amendment, and I think they'd really like the opportunity to participate kind of in the process. We'd love to do that as well. We think we can definitely get there. I think there's a lot of room to work on this, but this is a very important policy issue, and we just like the opportunity to work with the great staff at the county and the planning department to try and figure out a way that we can kind of mitigate the unintended consequences, because there are significant unintended consequences with sort of writ large allowing utility-scale solar in the rural portions of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Fleckenstein. I do have a couple of commissioners in queue to speak. Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Neil. That presentation, the email you sent all of us helped to flesh this out, and I think we've all seen these large-scale developments. I am excited about moving forward with this, but, Mr. County Administrator, I would like to hear your reflections on postponing the comp plan amendments until September or such time we want to bring back the ordinance as well, since we're continuing that. I am persuaded that this may not look like other types of infrastructure in the rural area or meeting the rural land use category, that we may need to think through that a little bit more. The comp plan amendment is pretty straightforward. I know you intended to flesh that out further in the rules, but I'm just wondering if there is benefit to waiting for the comp plan amendment as well, just to make sure we get it right.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I think, you know, given that this, the comp plan amendment cycle is what it is in terms of the steps in the process, by passing this tonight, you would allow us to begin that process, and we can... I heard what Mr. Fleckenstein said. I don't think there's anything that stops us between now and your adoption in October to address all of those issues. But if we miss this window to transmit, then we really miss the opportunity to move the amendment forward at all. We'd be waiting a year to do that during the cycle. So this allows us to continue moving forward, but we have ample time, I believe, to address Mr. Fleckenstein's issues with our staff and have those reflected in the items that we bring back to you in October.
And before... thank you for that. Before final approval, should we want to change the language or make it more specific, even though we've already transmitted this, we have the flexibility to do that?
You do. I believe you do have that opportunity.
Versus just voted up or down in October?
Yes.
So we have the opportunity, because we'll go through the same review process, all of those types of things?
Absolutely.
losing a year may be challenging as well, but I think we need to be very... if this moves forward tonight, be very deliberate in ensuring we hear concerns, and really, I think the experience from South Georgia right now or other communities may be very informative. I wonder if there's property, you know, that used to be silviculture after the hurricane, it's now being converted. We may see a lot more of this in our region, and looking at this in a really constructive way, it could persuade me to satisfy some of those concerns. So I'll wait and hear from the rest of the board on this, but I'm inclined to wait unless we have a very specific process to make sure we answer some of these questions before final approval. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Seeing other commissioners in queue to speak, I do think we inadvertently missed a speaker card on this item.
Yes.
Would you go ahead and call that for us, Mr. Administrator?
The speaker is Kurt Wimmer, and I apologize if I didn't get your name right.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kent Wimmer. I live at 1294 Avondale Way. I live in the unincorporated area of Leon County, but I am a city utilities customer, and I subscribe 100% to the city solar fields. So I support solar energy. I wish that I could install solar panels on my house, but I have beautiful live oak trees that provide shade in the summertime, so I don't wish to cut those down. I am here because I am concerned about the large-scale conversion of forested and other agricultural and working lands and open space to solar fields. I'm concerned that the proposed ordinance does not provide enough guidance, or the county has an effective design standards for citing these facilities, their size, the amount of clearing of forest and fields that they'll allow, and then also what, you know, does a county have standards for evaluating the impact to the adjacent rural areas? Without guidance, Leon County could be... could face unmanaged development of massive industrial-scale solar fields eating up our working rural lands and forests like the one near I-10, the intersection of I-10 and I-75, or those ones that Neil showed pictures of going up in Georgia. Allowing all solar fields ranging in scales for those serving neighborhoods to industrial size, covering hundreds to thousands of acres, should not be considered appropriate under the light industrial land use classification and will not preserve the rural character of our... of overall Leon County, of our rural areas. Please propose approving these comp plan changes so these issues can be more fully studied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have Commissioner Proctor and then Commissioner Deluge.
Chairman, thank you, commissioners. I agree with both speakers tonight that this issue is not ripe. It's not ready for the major leagues at all, and it needs to be studied and kept into the farm system until we can get more authoritative understanding. I'm reminded with technology that when the phones first came out, they used to be real heavy, you know, heavy things like army phones from years ago. And they carried also conveyed a heavy load of radiation. It's been said by his doctors that Attorney Johnny Cochran developed a brain cancer on the side of his head, which he held the phone all the time, and his doctor said that it was because of his phone. We've also seen televisions that used to be huge and heavy to pick up those floor-model televisions, and now you can get a 60-inch, and Commissioner Dozier can pick it up. And, you know, amazingly, the screen is bigger, all of that, but it's much more lightweight. What I'm saying is that I believe that solar is going to become a lot more efficient over the years, and it really would be a mistake to allow for all those, you know, forests to be cleared out to the tune of 2,500 acres. I'm not sure if we have an ordinance or proposal that considers limiting the number of acreage that can be placed in our forests. I don't know how these... this cluster of 2,000-acre-type, these mirrors, how will that impact the rabbit population? Will that be a detriment to the squirrels or ant beds? I don't know. But I think that we need to be interested in the totality of the impact on the solar stuff. We really need to have a grasp of the radioactive influences, whether or not those clusters that the FAA has anything to say about that kind of illumination. But we should probably have a roundtable talk, which involves the county's sustainable energy unit that we have, and I would love to see this engaged by a wider source of voices, even workshop on these issues, not only health issues for humans, but the health issues and implications on trees. There was somebody here tonight, she... I think she's gone, was talking about two trees. I ain't talking about two. I'm talking about 2,000 trees that could be impacted by this. But if someone could come down here and gave a good argument for two trees, maybe there are some more voices that will stand up for 2,000 trees, and I think a lot is at stake. There is no doubt that what technology over the last few years have demonstrated, even with the reduction of cars, the '70s gave us the great 18-foot, 19-foot-long Lincolns and Cadillacs, and even Cadillac and Lincoln has reduced, come in about by four feet now. And I think that the future is going to allow solar to be more efficient, and what's being done, like up in Brooks County, my college roommate is from Brooks County, one time for Danny Whitfield, but I hate to see his county turn into what they've shown us here. Maybe we need to put a cap on how much, how large... I don't even know what 500 acres of produce in energy. What will 1,000 acres portend to translate into energy? What kind of energy? Is the city going to be the beneficiary? Then they get that energy and charge us, overcharge us, citizens on the south side? Who's going to get to play as the owner of it, and who's going to get to pay as a recipient of these services? It ain't clear. We should have something that is scaled to tell us what we anticipate, 100 acres, 500, 1,000, 1,500 acres, how much energy does that represent? And I'm willing to bet Kristen Dozier's computer that in the next 20 years, what 2,000 acres of energy produced now, is going to be some technology that you can probably do that in 200 acres. That's why we don't need to go hog-wile and cut down all the trees for something that next few years is going to take much less, that will convert and produce much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to clarify some things here. I'm a little confused about where we're going with this. It looks to me like all we're doing is pushing two together and waiting till the fall to make a decision. Is that the short version?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not... we're not locking anything in, putting something in place. I mean, it's... at this point, you've got two separate transactions, 31, 32, and you're basically pushing them together, and because of the timing with the comp plan, you've got such large frames, you just get in line. And I think to Neil's comment, which is well-taken, there's a lot of people out there that have concerns. We got from now till September to get in front of those concerns, if I understand correctly, unless I'm completely missing something here.
Let me... Mr. Chairman, if I could, Commissioner Dozier's point, and it allows me to clean up something in response to Commissioner Dozier's comment. And what I was referring to about making changes, I know this is something that the board can appreciate, I think the level of detail that Mr. Fleckenstein was talking about is specifically something that we do not want to have in the comp plan, but we want to have in our ordinance that would be consistent with perennially, with decades of work that we've done about getting that level of detail out of the comp plan and into the ordinance. So really, my comments were more about the changes that you can continue to make in the ordinance, again, with the level of detail that would be appropriate to have in the ordinance and not in the comp plan. I don't think that the comp plan is, again, the text amendment is where you'd want to have that. But specifically, my cleanup, Commissioner Dozier, was on your ability to change the text amendment. Again, I think that after conferring with the legal minds, they would say, "No, if you're going to make substantive changes to the comp plan amendment, that we would have to do so before the adoption hearing." So we'd have to have scheduled, you know, probably you all to take a look at it, like in September or something like that. I just wanted to clean that up.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I fully understand that we don't want that, the same level of detail in the ordinance as we do in the comp plan. I have to say, I mean, I'm... we've been talking about this for a while, and I think I'm excited that we're moving forward. I am now questioning whether or not this needs to be a simple change, if I'm understanding this correctly, to an existing land use category. The impact of 500 acres of solar, removing that amount of trees, it may be very easy for someone to meet the rules of the comp plan. Yes, we would have more detailed rules in the ordinance, for sure. So that gives us time to look at the buffer and other things. But is this the same type of development that we would contemplate in this rule category ever before? I'm now questioning that because of the tremendous large scale of it. So, yes, we don't want the amount of detail in there, but do we have enough? Is it in the right posture? These are new questions that have come up, so I'm asking them kind of in real time here.
Mr. Administrator.
Yeah, and I would, you know, probably at this point, getting to that level of detail, I'd probably ask Cherie to come up and address some of that. Essentially, what this did would be to provide us with consistency in the definitions between the two, but I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Dozier. Essentially, my understanding is that the comp plan really didn't contemplate solar pretty much at all, and our current regulations allow it pretty much only in heavy industrial, and... but again, to accommodate that, the use that we all want to provide and allow it in the appropriate land categories. Again, that's what this would do. But again, for a little further level of questioning, I'd probably have to defer to Cherie to come up.
While Cherie is making her way, Commissioner Minor, you are in queue, yes or no?
I am.
Okay.
Chairman, I am, but let me go ahead and wait till after Cherie speaks, please.
Okay, cool. No problem.
Certainly. What this would do would allow the solar in any place where light infrastructure would be allowed, and we would, through the land development regulations, we could go back and regulate such things as how large it is, how close maybe one solar farm is next to another solar farm, how many... you can regulate the aggregate size within a quadrant, you know, of the county. So those types of things would... could be done at the land development code level.
That makes more sense. Within the light industrial, because that is a piece of this...
Correct. We're modifying the definition of light industrial.
Light industrial, right. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox. I'm sorry. Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just so I'm clear, so on the timeline for this, so it looks like if we had any changes to the text amendment from what's in here, we would... that would come up for us in September, and then the adoption hearing would be for the actual... would be in October, October 15th, I think, right?
That's great.
That's the timeline?
According to the timeline... Sorry. According to the timeline that we have proposed, the adoption would be October 15th, right?
And based on Commissioner Dozier's very first question, we do have the ability to change the text amendment after we transmit it. And we could do that at the September meeting.
Go ahead, Cherie. I'll let you answer that.
Once the comp plan amendment is transmitted, that's the amendment that you would not be able to change that. If between now and, say, now in October, you decided you did want... let's say you decided to transmit, and then we decided that we did want to change that language, what we would do is simply hold another transmittal hearing and postpone and have a later adoption hearing. So that is another possibility as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Maddox, thank you.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Real quick, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Fleckenstein to come up and see if... to just address that, to answer that question, if he thinks that maybe September coming back would give you and some of the folks that you confer with some time to take a look at some of these changes. I know I'm putting you on the spot. This is non-binding, but just want to get a sense for whether or not that timeframe might work.
Well, we only learned about... I only got involved in Brooks County two weeks ago, so we've been able to move pretty quickly on that as well. Yeah, I mean, I think you have a lot of interest from folks in the rural community, from Tall Timbers, from Keep It Rural, et cetera, and I think they would do everything from Tall Timbers, from Keep It Rural, et cetera, and I think they would do everything they could to try and provide input as fast as possible to try and flesh this issue out. I think, I do think, you know, a lot of this can be addressed in the ordinance, but I think there's also an aspect of it that's important, to have policy guidance in the comp plan, because this is very different from other rural forms of infrastructure. It's affecting very large swaths of land just by the nature of the particular use. And for that reason, I think it is important to have some guidance in the comp plan and then all the details flushed out in the ordinance, because there's a real trade-off in terms of resources that are potentially affected, rural character that's affected. And we've done a lot of work as a community on the protection of that rural character, you know, South Side, North Side, East Side, West Side. And that's something I wouldn't want to see undermined. Answer to your question, though, I think you'd have people who would want to participate and would do so very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
On point. On point. Neil.
You said, so you're saying that you have people that want to participate, so you'd be okay with us moving forward? The question I have, Mr. Administrator, is what's the harm in waiting? I understand we may miss a cycle, but, I mean, why can't we just take it up another time, or miss this cycle and take it up next cycle? I'm trying to understand why we have to push this through right now, if it is a place where we have to push it through. So Neil, could you talk to me a little bit about, I know we put you in a position that you have to work with us, you will work with us, but that's not the question I'm asking. What I'm asking is, what's the idea here? Is there any need to try to push this through right now? Keep it rural, as well as Tall Timbers and the folks who have come before us, as spoke today. I have been good stewards, have been good partners with us and worked with us pretty well when we've asked them to. I'm just trying to see if there's a middle ground here, or we have to do this right away.
Mr. Administrator.
Yes, no, I think what we've tried to say is that you can keep this out-of-cycle amendment on track, and we will have the time, we believe, to meet with Neil and other stakeholders to bring you back a comp plan amendment, a text amendment that reflects that work. At that time, you all can decide if that text amendment is something you want to transmit or if you don't, if you want to start over and transmit a new, based on what Cherie said, a new amendment.
Neil?
Yeah, I think you'd have landowners, you'd have Keep It Rural, folks like that, who I think would be willing to come to the table as soon as possible. I think we've had great outcomes working with staff before, and I would expect nothing less this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Move option one. I think Commissioner Proctor, did you leave yourself?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I would, very much, the zoning for, is the zoning for this, what is the zoning for the solar energy? What would it come in under?
The zoning, we're actually dealing with what we'd call a light infrastructure use, and there's several zoning districts that allow that light infrastructure use. The one that we're talking about here, that Neil was talking about, is the rural and agricultural districts.
Okay. That's what I remember reading about rural. And I just think that this is a Trojan horse upon to insert this under rural designation when it really should be under a manufacturing in an industrial, because this is a utility that we're talking about. And not only is it a utility, but it's a utility that's going to be conveying and transmitting energies for consumption, for sale, for consumers. And to that extent, I really think that the big minds that think about stuff like this all come together and to see if we should really co-op our rural categories, or whether there's a different land use. And I think, I just think that it violates the spirit of what I have considered and what I have perceived citizens as seeing, what they consider to be rural. The function here is manufacturing and producing electricity. And that's quite different from the agricultural type of simple things that we do under rural. This is quite different. So I would love to see the train slow down and for Tall Timbers and those kind of groups to give us some help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Commissioner Lindley, I'll go to you. You have a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we've heard tonight is saying we want to get more involved on, down the road, I mean, starting tonight, but I'm comfortable going ahead with the process. I don't want to see us wait another year, because there is a lot going on, and I think we need to have some policy guiding us on solar. So I'm with the assurance that there's going to be a lot of fleshing out in, you know, our codes and our ordinances, I'm happy to move option one.
Second. Motion's been made, on point, and then we'll vote. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually, I think I can support this motion, but I was going to make a motion myself, so perhaps an amendment. And Mr. County Administrator, you can let us know if this is already part of the process, but I think some specific direction to work with various stakeholders, to look at examples from our neighboring counties and neighboring states, and to bring us back a discussion item on this, an agenda item in September, even if it's a step before the final ordinance in a public hearing. I'm wondering if that is a way for us to better understand if we're there yet before we get to the next public hearing, and then we could give some direction as to whether or not we want to retract this and start over with an amendment. I would like another step in that process.
And that's perfect timing for us. It coincides with us bringing our ordinance back, and we could, at that point, do a check-in as well on the transmittal of the text amendment.
So I want to see that, do you want to make that an amendment?
I would like to make an amendment to do an agenda item prior to a public hearing, because I think that gives us more time to hear from folks and to ask for changes versus a public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator?
Yes, we can do that. Again, our, the next item completes, I think the rescheduling or the continuance of the public hearing.
Yes.
But we could, again, taking that into consideration, we could bring back an agenda item prior to a public hearing.
I can only get there on the transmittal if we've got a robust process that's very specific, people have comfort with that. Last question, Mr. Chair, the, Mr. County Administrator, just to make sure I'm understanding this clearly, when you're talking about, this is an out-of-cycle amendment, others, you just said something about moving forward with this, we can retract it later and do a different type of amendment. It's still an out-of-cycle amendment, so we don't necessarily have to wait a year. Is that correct? Or?
Right. If you could, you could continue along the process. It's only if you wanted to abandon the out-of-cycle process and wait for.
The typical process.
The typical process.
But we could still do a new comp plan amendment in an out-of-cycle process.
Yes. Is there any limitations on that, Cherie? No, you're right.
If in September, if we want to change things up. Okay. This gives me the comfort that we will have that time in September to check in again. Thank you.
Commissioner, hold on just a second, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Lindley, will you accept that?
Yes. Yeah. On this item, Mr. Chairman, you know, we're a tree-hugging community, but I'm willing to bet Commissioner Maddox's car, that for most of the tree-huggers, if they discover oil on that land, they would remove them trees. I mean, there wouldn't be no resistance if you find oil on that land. I am saying to us that at some point in three generations from now, this solar panel stuff can replace the natural gas that the city uses for utilities now. And I am saying to us that these solar panels is going to be the new, Ms. Voss, Ms. Voss got that? What's she?
No, she's here. She's here. She's listening.
All right. I need, I need Ms. Voss to capture this right here. In three generations, a solar panel will replace a natural gas for electrics in this community. A solar panel will carry the weight of oil discovered. And if we do not calibrate the removal of trees, it's just going to go crazy. And I think that we should look at, in the potential ordinances or the, that we should look at some limits and scale some production to the amount of trees that we and what it's going to produce. Now, I wish that Ms. Voss, she left a day too soon, would also capture that our future is going to, is going to also show where Commissioner Proctor was dead right and prophetic, that the use of solar panels and tearing down the trees, we're going to have to fight people from knocking trees down for solar panels, because they will have the value of oil. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded with the addition of an agenda item. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, by the same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I think this next item is consistent with the conversation that has occurred to this point. We were originally recommending that the ordinance be continued until September 24th and scheduled for a public hearing at that time. Based on the action the commission just took, we could schedule an agenda item for September 17th and continue to advertise the ordinance for public hearing on the 24th. And the board, if the board was not satisfied or had substantive changes in direction on the 17th, we could always continue this to a later date.
Does that require a motion?
It would be option one.
All right, it's moved by Commissioner Maddox.
Doesn't need to be modified to be an agenda item versus a public hearing?
Well, we, I just, I construed the previous direction as.
Okay, so you, okay, okay. All right, option one.
And I should say.
With amendments made by the county administrator.
Got it. I should say, Commissioner, I almost missed this opportunity. There's a, we have one speaker card on item number 32.
There is a continuance, but you're welcome to use your three minutes and come up and speak.
Danielle Irwin.
Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive. I'm speaking to you as a resident of Leon County, not affiliated with the League of Women Voters at the current moment. And this is in addition on to the last agenda item. I apologize, I got my speaker card in a bit late. I have had 20 years, almost 20 years, of environmental regulation in the state of Florida, both North Florida and South Florida combined. Granted, mostly in the range of water resource management as opposed to energy, but there are a lot of similarities that we're facing here with this incentive essentially through the comp plan and through the ordinance for solar. I am for solar, so please let that be known for the record. However, I worry about the lack of balance as we move towards with sustainable development and sustainable initiatives. There always needs to be balance and a full cost-benefit analysis of any externalities associated with jumping on the solar trend. So the important externalities that come to mind when I think of this are the conversion of open green space for solar fields and the loss of biodiversity that goes along with it, creating a disincentive for small family farms. I think the need for small family farms is only going to grow. That's a separate topic for a separate discussion. So really, my plea is, as you're developing this ordinance and as you're working with the stakeholders such as Tall Timbers, that we keep in mind that these sustainable initiatives have to balance all externalities so that it's a win-win. We're always looking for that win-win. There's always losers, but we want the most win-win that we can get from this issue. That's all. Thank you.
And thank you again.
Move option one, as amended by the county administrator, as stated by the county administrator, amended. Now we have a second.
Moving option one. Do we have a second to Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, by the same sign. Motion passes. At this time, I believe we will not adjourn, but we will move from our public hearing back to our regular meeting agenda. Thank you, Cherie. Item number 21, I think, is where we left off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 21 seeks your authorization to negotiate an agreement with Tallahassee Lenders Consortium to serve as our community land trust. As you may recall, commissioners, this was one of the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Work Group approved by the county and the city back in November. Subsequently, in June, the county and city commissions authorized us to put a joint RFP on the street to identify a nonprofit to serve as the community land trust. That process resulted in the recommendation before you today to award that to the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. The city commission recently approved a similar agenda item, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. I have no speakers on this item.
Okay, option's been made and moved. There are speakers, so we will allow for Mr. Commissioner Proctor, pardon. You are in queue.
And I was going to move the motion, that's right.
Okay, they beat to it.
Stronger.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This agenda today is almost like Commissioner Proctor's agenda a few months ago, when he was excited because everything he wanted was on there. A few years back, I had the opportunity to take the housing tour. I speak about it every time these things come up, because it's that exciting for me. And two other things that were important to the housing tour is on this agenda is very well made, coming to fruition for us, and that, there's two very important things in the land bank and the community quarterback organization being stood up by some funding with the item that we'll have later. And so I'm so excited about what we're doing here today with this land bank and the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium for their partnership on it. Look forward to the affordable housing that it's going to create in the future. This is not something that we're experimenting with. This is something that I've actually seen work, and I'm glad that we are starting to use it here. So I move option one with extreme excitement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Option's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. I do have Commissioner Dozier in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been a long meeting already, so I want to thank our TLC partners for sticking around with us. A few of us were able to attend another tour hosted by TLC just recently and got to see some of the great projects they're working on. I am excited. Commissioner Maddox, you've referenced this with the KCCI tour, but the joint conversation with the city started about November 14, and we've made tremendous progress. I think the land trust came up about a year later in our work group. The fact that we are here and we keep moving forward, and HFA and Tallahassee Housing, I saw Brenda here earlier, TLC, everyone is doing more and more, so it's, it is fantastic. I'm really excited about this. So thank you all, and I look forward to talking with you out multi-family soon. So you all are getting into multi-family, so that is fantastic. The only other comment, Mr. Chair, is I, we had the vacation rental tax issue earlier, and I didn't want to mention this in relation to that issue, I'm all for collecting tourist tax, but other communities, I don't think we're ever going to get there, but other communities have real challenges with their affordable housing when vacation rentals, Airbnb, VRBO, others move in and start to, people start to rent their houses more. I don't, again, think this is a major issue for us. We're not going to be, Carrie, I'm sorry, we're going to be a major tourist destination. We're not going to be Miami, though, which is okay for all of us. But I do think this is an issue that we need to keep tracking. I'm glad for the numbers, Ms. County Administrator, maybe around 190, 200 vacation rentals now by your rough counts. I know there were some challenges with that data, but I would love to find a way to keep up to date. And if we see vacation rentals really tipping and growing exponentially, I think we need to bring it into the affordable housing conversation and make sure we understand what the impact might be long-term. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was the only other thought I wanted to offer.
No other commissioners in queue to speak. Motion has been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 22 seeks the board's ratification of your June 18 budget workshop. Again, this is all actions that the board's, that the board has already taken at that workshop, with the addition of reconciling the new July values, as well as your consideration of purpose-built funding in the amount of $75,000 to address two years of a three-year funding request that they've made that's consistent with where we were previously on the item. However, the board wished to have this brought back pending the city commission's approval, which I believe they're expected to take up tomorrow night. So with that, we're recommending options one through eight. We have no speakers on this item and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Second.
All right. We do have a couple of commissioners' motion has been made, seconded, Commissioner Maddox, please.
Again, Mr. Chair, a candy store for me today. Want to thank the city for their commitment to purpose-built communities and the South City Foundation and the amount that actually brought on board our $75,000. I want to thank the county administrator for his thoughtful. I wanna thank the County Administrator for his thoughtfulness in going with 75 with the thought that maybe if the CSC gets through, that other 25 can come from there. This is something, again, I'm very excited about, look forward to working with that foundation and standing up the community, the communities that they're gonna be looking at. And so that I will be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo Commissioner Maddox's comments, I'm also really excited about purpose-built communities and $75,000. This will fund the first two years, $50,000 first year, $25,000 the second year. The third year, I think in the agenda item it does say that we hope that the CSC, if should it pass, then may be interested in funding for that third year. If by chance it doesn't, then we could revisit that third year and provide that other $25,000, correct? Yeah. So, supportive of the motion.
On point, Mr. Chair. I did wanna mention that all the folks that were here earlier, Ms. Williams, Christine Henry and that crowd, they were here to support this measure, our recommendation number eight here with the staff recommendation. I'm hoping it passes because I told them, because Ms. Henry said it was her husband's birthday, they could go home. So if you guys do not pass this, I'm in a lot of trouble. So, but again, we're all very excited, look forward to moving forward with this and community quarterback organization doing exactly what we're putting them in place to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Loesch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm willing to go ahead with this, but if you remember, our approval was gonna be contingent on the city, and I realize their meeting's not till tomorrow night. I don't want this to turn into tomorrow night if the city, while the county approved it, so you guys need to approve it, which I sometimes feel we get played a little bit. So if the city decides to hesitate or stall or do something, I would tell you I'll come back and vehemently oppose this because I really feel like we should be not the first money in the door, but the last money in the door. This is not a county-run project. The other thing, just as a cautionary tale, if you look at these projects that are done around the country, there's always a big private vendor that steps in, similar to like what Rick Carney did with the Carney Center. There's generally a Coca-Cola, a GM, or somebody that steps in and makes a major commitment. And I'm just a little nervous about where we go. I'm not, I'll vote for it tonight, I'm fine with that, but I just, just some caution. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Last thing. Commissioner Loesch, I'm glad you brought that up because that's another thing I was gonna speak to, and if I can find the email, right off the top of my head, I know that Mr. Carney, I think, committed about $50,000. I think that...
We're talking...
I understand, I understand, but at least to stand up this organization, we do have some big-time commitments from those types of organizations. Now, you're right, who's gonna be that big benefactor in our community that basically builds College Town, the College Town version of affordable housing in Leon County? I don't know who that is yet, but hopefully, you know, somebody reached out to the vote board and maybe willing to do it, you know? We have that, we do have the capacity, it's just we need those people to wanna get involved. And that's what the community quarterback organization is all about, going out and finding those folks who wanna be involved and getting them involved at a point to invest those kind of dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Motion for options one through eight has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Administrator, item 23.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 23 seeks your authorization to award a bid for open-grade hot mix paving materials and services. The contract and other related services help us to perform stabilization on county-maintained dirt roads as well as resurfacing on OGHM roads. This item is included in your budget, and the option reflects the lowest responsive bidder in this competitive procurement. We have no speakers on this item.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor, option one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I think we are on item 27, if my math is correct. 24, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 24 seeks your authorization to award a bid, again, to the lowest responsive bidder for sidewalk and associated construction work. This is a unit price bid, and we obviously will only use what we need anybody contemplates our work through 2022. And again, option one reflects the lowest responsive bidder who met the MWBE targets for this bid. Happy to answer any questions you might have. We have zero speakers on this item.
Commissioner Maddox has moved option one, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Now, I believe we're on item 27.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 27 is involuntary annexation proposal. The annexation request complies with state statute and is consistent with the comp plan, therefore, staff recommends not objecting to the voluntary annexation.
Any speakers?
And we have, let me just check, we have no speakers on this item.
Okay. Second. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'm opposed to this measure for voluntary annexation. The map, which is under attachment one that we received, you know, the annexation pattern of the city is race-oriented up in this area. And as you look at Meridian Road, the area which is being asked to come into the city, it says it's contiguous to something. I can't quite make out what it's contiguous to. The area on the left side of the west side of Meridian Road, which is where black people live, Papa Drive, Channel Dog Drive, up at Reverend Fouts, where he lives, those people not in the city. And effectively, these black people don't get to vote in these elections, and they're being locked out of voting in city elections. But the white side of the street, on the right side, which does not have high-powered gas lines transmitted through them, but the left side, the west side of the street, in addition to not voting and can't vote in the city elections, the high-powered gas pipes flow on that side of the street. As you look down there at Miller Landing Road, we get just a piece of it, and I know that Forest Metals is back up in there. I guess the city park back up there, that must be the city. And it goes on down the street and ignores the black side of the communities, historic. And I'm off memory now, I don't have any paper in front of me, but when you go up Centerville Road, the city's city limits excludes black communities on the east side of Centerville Road, and it'll go up, and then it'll claim white communities, and then it'll go down the hill, and it'll claim Buckhead Community. Y'all know something about that one? That's the city. Across the street, the little church, the city limit skips the black church there, and it goes on down to Victory Garden, Victory Garden, which is an entrance to Killarney, and that's the city. There's a racial pattern here that the city claims little neighborhoods, and one of the things that gives heartburn, in addition, when you look at the agreement, which the city says the city of Tallahassee will install an underground electric distribution system to serve the project. With the installation of an underground, see, they don't get on top of the ground, with the installation of an underground electric system, the entire system up to the secondary service pedestal will be installed at the city's expense. I can't get sidewalks in South City from the city. You can't get lights in areas on the south side. You can't even get owned. And the city has made a fantastic agreement, which includes rebates to the developer for persons who tie into the water, the sewer rebate. So the city is gonna give the developer rebates for each house that comes in, and should the city, should the project annex until the city limits within three years of the effective date of this agreement, the project will be eligible for partial rebate of on-site water and sewer infrastructure. The city says that electric conduit will be installed in conjunction with the city gas line. So your neighborhoods getting the, you know, we're asking the developer to put in the sidewalks. Once the developer puts the sidewalks in, the city agrees to take them over and maintain. And then on these, whereas on the ordinance back here, you see the city is perfectly willing to say that they've determined that the annexation does not create any pocket or enclave, and the city is in a position to provide municipal services to the property described. How's the city declaring that they're in such a position to provide these municipal services, but they won't provide the same services to historic black neighborhoods? It's right here in black and white. So I believe that there is a racial distinction occurring. It's been that way for years. Rebates to the developer for all the goodies, the city is not even, is committed to underground. We can't get underground down here. We say how expensive it is, but just reading what they committed to, there's a distinction, there's a disparity, there's a difference in how one side of town is being treated. And it's associated with what is, I guess, is anticipated to be majority-white neighborhoods, and this is very wrong. But this is an act of active, ongoing gerrymandering in the process of disallowing people to vote in the city limits. So you look down Meridian, and I encourage the Board, I encourage all of the people in this community to look at Centerville Road and to look at the hodgepodge and how the city skips over black communities, excluding them from the city. But they have the capacity, they say, to provide the municipal services, but they don't do the same.
Thank you.
So I will oppose it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, I appreciate that. So said, we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Did we have a second? I'm sorry, I missed it. Have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Six one. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item two is the voluntary annexation. It too is consistent with state statute and is in compliance with the comp plan, therefore we're recommending option one, and we have one speaker card on this item. Speaker Sue Ellen?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sue Ellen. Okay, I'm a resident of the Oak Ridge neighborhood, which is on the south side. I have city electric and water. However, I'm not allowed to vote for city government, although the city government, I mean, although certain areas around, surrounding my neighborhood are. And in many cases, the difference is literally a couple blocks away. Decisions made by the city government affects me greatly. I would like the ability to vote on that leadership. It's frustrating and it's confusing. I feel like my voice has been taken away. And so the question is, with the voluntary annexation, will it be possible to reestablish the zoning so that my community, my neighborhood, can vote like the surrounding areas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and I'll defer, Herb can jump in here as well, but voluntary annexations tend to be single-ownership, large-track, single-ownerships that are done at some point during the development stage in terms of the annexation process. What the speakers referring to would be an annexation that would follow a little bit different course of petition initiative. There is a process for that, but it is different than a voluntary annexation like this one. Herb, you wanna jump in?
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your comments, and I think we had one speaker earlier who may have left who referenced the same. It's the, we've talked about this over the years. There are many people who are on city utilities but live in the county, and I would guess decisions made by our predecessors. And I mean, this has been baked in for a long time. So I do wanna make a motion for option one because as someone who is concerned, I'm sorry, I'll pause, Mr. Chair, if there's a second.
One second.
Okay, thank you. I have been concerned about the annexation process, some of the comments Commissioner Proctor made, we've talked about before. I am very, there are a few areas of town where you can see very clearly who's been left out and who is in, and I would celebrate it if the city of Tallahassee would take this up and consider it and reflect on the history of this, because I think it's just kind of the spaghetti line that is the city limits has kind of come by piecemeal over the years. So I would celebrate someone looking at this, but when we tried to do it, we found that there was only little tweaks around the edges, that we really are in the position of approving something and we can't really change it. So I just wanted to acknowledge those concerns. I will support this, but would welcome even a mayor-chair conversation about that in the future. Thank you.
Has been made and seconded by Commissioner Lindley. I do have Commissioner Proctor in queue as well as Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, if you look at attachment one, page 101, you clearly see that in the center of coming down Shelfer Road and coming across, what's that, Ross Road and all of that, you will clearly see that the city goes right in the core of this mostly African-American community. And it has grabbed a little centerpiece there, and it comes down to Cross Crossway and this little parcel right here. And I think, is that, is this the car auction place? Is this where the car auction is?
It is, it is.
It's a car auction? Okay, I thought so. Okay, so this is a white-owned business here, where the cars are auctioned and all of those things. And I have Ms. Gardner, who lives on the, well, she didn't tell you where she lived, she lives on the east side of Shelfer Road and can't vote, but the city can go past her house and have gone past her house and won't include her. These people live on the east side between Crawfordville and Shelfer Road, they have all been racially redlined out of city services, and it's just racial. I, can y'all put that map up, Brittany, please? Have a map to show you how serious, how insidious, and how much this practice permeates the south side, that the city don't want our people to vote. They just don't want us eligible for their elections and won't provide the services. But we had an item on 27, the one that you just supported, you approved, that went way up Meridian Road, like almost 14 miles from City Hall, and the city won't go, I mean, 14 miles north of the city's hall and send all the sewer back down here. These people right there, they can smell it. These people right down there where the plane takes off every morning and lands late at night, they're right there. And, but the city makes commitments to provide what we would consider luxurious offerings to a neighborhood that's never existed. These people don't exist it, and in effect, you're talking about the Fourth of July, they really have taxation without representation, because they're taxed by a government that makes money from them, electric, sewer, stuff like that, I think, I'm not sure. But they can't, they can't select their representative. I think I read it last week in the Declaration of Independence, something about tyranny when people are taxed and have no voice. They have none. So when you look at the area that's circled there, and you look at all the white area there, and that area inside of Capitol Circle that is an enclave of probably thousands of folk living there. Then you got Southwood that have come to our vocabulary within the last 15, 20 years. Southwood is a very late addition, and the city has had no problem annexing that area which once was owned by... which once was owned by St. Joe Company. It was just woods over there. And now it's a functional part of the city. And everybody in Southwood gets to vote in the city elections. But all the people who have lived for years and years and years north of the Mason-Dixie line of Capitol Circle, they just down there functionally denied voting privileges in the city election. This is, in a sense, a racial restrictive covenant. And there's no reason that what has happened with that yellow area with the marker in some of that area, that the city chooses to go down there and give this car auction place all the rights and privileges pertaining to being with citizenship in the city. People deserve citizenship in the city. This is a Fourteenth Amendment equal protection argument here, that they are being treated differently. It's separate and it's unequal. And you can spot the city's behavior and their practices on the north side of Tallahassee. It's just that wherever black people live, the city don't want them. And then you can come, and you can go way up 14 miles north, the city don't want them. And then they will bring and stick this in front of our faces to tell us to, y'all, go ahead and greenlight and annex this right here for us, for them. And then if you come down on the south side, in their enclaves where black people live at, and the city don't want us either on that side, what side of town can a black community not get excluded and get included in the city so that they can vote even though they're paying taxes? And the reason they're paying taxes through that utility is because 30% of the city's revenues on utility is transferred to their general fund to sustain government operations. So here we have people here who are being taxed, and 30% of what they pay supports the city's government. And the city, these people are going to pay for underground utilities up there, and some of these people don't have functional access to sewer from the city. But sewer is going in. They're paying for it. She can't vote. She can't vote. But she's also paying for it and cannot vote, and she's paying for it for what other people are being subsidized, and that is not right. That's why I'm asking y'all to deny this effort to annex and cherry pick for this particular white business while all these black families are overlooked, denied. And by whatever the process is, the city don't want them. And I think we should put our foot down.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, Commissioner Lindley, if you give me one second, I just have, I have procedural questions. Mr. Administrator and Mr. Attorney, explain, and I think I understand it, voluntary is when a property owner requests annexation into the city. And if it's a large block of land, and that one property owner can do it, but if it's a block of land where it's been broken up into different parcels, then it has to be done by petition from those parcels, correct? And then involuntary is when the city goes into a neighborhood and attempts to ask them, that neighborhood, to come into the city through a vote of the property owners within the geographic area that they're trying to annex, correct? Within that triangle, has there been any attempt to annex any of those parcels that Commissioner Proctor was talking about? What happened? That was through, that was through involuntary annexation? And it failed by vote of the, of the citizens within the area? The thing, the thing that I, I want to talk about here is not necessarily what the city's doing, what they're not doing. We have, we have tried, I think Commissioner Dozier, I was talking about it offline a second ago, that we have actually.
I'm glad we promised her.
I'm putting it out in the open that I asked you a question. I asked, I asked Commissioner Dozier a question of, didn't we address this? And she spoke to it a second ago, in that we were looking at just different ways, and we, we adjusted our ordinance to address it. I would ask it the mayor-chair to, to have the conversation, but the question I have here is, what else can you do? If the city moves the boundaries, if they, they, the neighborhoods that we're speaking of, they have the option of involuntary, if it's involuntary, to vote on whether or not they want to be in the city. And a lot of times, folks who, who live in the county don't necessarily want to be in the county, but be in the city because it increases their, their taxes and stuff like that. So, look, for, for, for people like you, ma'am, who want to be in the city, I think you should be. You know? And if you could get, if, if you have a large enough piece of land, or if there's enough people within your neighborhood who want to do it, I say go for that petition, put it out there, and if the city turns you down, shame on them. I'd be the first, first person over there to fight for you, okay? But what I'm not, what I'm not, what I don't want to do is have a situation where we're trying to force people into the city limits, because you've already had one neighborhood tried, who were, who were posed with involuntary annexation, who said plain out, we don't want it. So where it makes sense, it does make sense. But if a neighborhood doesn't want it, I don't want to force it on them. But like, again, ma'am, for people like yourself who want it.
Hey, I've been a resident there for 13 years, and I've owned my home for 13 years, and I've never taken a survey or been polled about doing it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's particularly your area, but I know as, as I remember, it's the area in, in that, in that circle. But what I'm saying to you is that it is a way for you to get it done. And if you could go into the, look at, look at the, look at the, your neighborhood, get folks to sign that petition, and take that to the city and say, hey, we want to be annexed. Because it's either one, it's either a large block of land, or it's, it's a neighborhood that has petitions signed, the petition signed, that has said, we want to be annexed in, that's the way to get it done. I, I truly believe those who want to vote, who are receiving, are in what we used to call the city fringe, that are receiving municipal services, that don't have the opportunity to vote, should have the opportunity to vote. But there are mechanisms to get them there. And, and if you have the information, you can get it done. And again, I will be the first, I will be the absolute first to go over to the city and fight for you if they say that they do not want to annex your neighborhood in if you get those petitions signed.
Mr. Attorney, could you chime in, please?
Well, I mean, what Commissioner Maddox just said is, is the correct answer, which is, there's only two ways to get inside the city unless you create a new city. And that is by voluntary annexation, which requires the owner or owners of the parcel to petition the city government to be annexed. Years ago, we had no say-so in the matter. But we negotiated a provision in the comp plan that gives the county an opportunity to comment if we believe that they don't meet the requirements of being contiguous, or they don't meet the, the concept of not creating an enclave. So we, and that's what this is on the agenda about. Staff reviews them. This one and the preceding one appeared to completely meet the requirements of Chapter 171, and so it's a voluntary annexation. But there is a, a second methodology, which is sometimes called involuntary annexation, and that's where you have a section of the unincorporated area where a, a percentage petitions the city government to conduct a special election. It's a dual referendum. People in the city have to vote yes, and the people in the area proposed to be annexed have to vote yes. In my time here, that's failed twice. Once in this general vicinity, and once, and my recollection is that they tried to annex the properties along Timber Lane Road north of I-10, and it failed. And so there's got to be enough people who want city services and the additional millage to pay for it.
Commissioner Proctor and?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to ask the county attorney and the county administrator to, to afford the commission a longer view of what has happened in this area. Having been here over the last 23 years, each of us, we, we know what has happened here. And the, the true truth of what has occurred here is that a vote, as county attorneys pointed out, did occur. And I believe, just off the top of my dome, I believe 72%, I believe it was 72% of the people opposed the city's annexation multiple years ago, but it was over 70%. Subsequent to the vote taken by the people, I'm asking the county attorney to allow for this, this, this day as to be informed, that notwithstanding the vote taken by the citizens, the city cherry picked the areas that they wanted to, and they forced an annexation of these areas. So the areas that are shaded in yellow or beige were areas that, though the complete area voted against it, the city, subsequent to that, rammed their golden rule down the throats of the voters, and they annexed this area subsequent to the vote, notwithstanding what these people desired. Is that true or not?
Commissioner Dozier?
I'm asking the county attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I would characterize it in the manner that you did, but they did receive voluntary annexation petitions, and, and that's the term, voluntary. I mean, Southwood is one, I mean, the, a hu- huge area that was done by St. Joe, and there are other sections that were done. So the answer is yes. After that, they, they were able to convince some folks to sign voluntary annexation petitions, and they've annexed them.
So what happened after that vote, Commissioners, is that the people did vote, but the 70-some percent of the people were ignored. And in a short, short time following that vote, they got run over, and the city went down there and annexed the parcels that they wanted anyway. What has happened is that what comes with being annexed in the city is a voter registration card that lets you vote for a city commissioner and a mayor. By disallowing and not actively engaging this whole area, these people don't get to vote for who the mayor is, though the mayor and the city commission sets their utility rate, and it sets rates for other services. That is a functional problem in democracy that is not tolerable when you write, this lady lives, this lady lives two streets over. It wants to be and was upset over this. So why create a methodology that's for citizens to have to jump up and leap and all of that? But the other thing that we know is the truth, is that just because the city you annex and you're in a black neighborhood, it still don't mean you're going to get sidewalks or covered ditches or any attention. So the city's long record of distinction and difference in what's available to, for instance, Kristen's District, Myers Park, separated by Magnolia Drive, walk across the street to South City. Those are clear distinctions, but that's the city. Thank you.
Your own point?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to move to the vote. Thank you.
All right. Motion has been made and been seconded. Motion, I believe, was made by, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. Motion was made by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Same sign? Motion passes six one. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 29 seeks the board's full, board appointments of citizens to the Investment Oversight Committee, as well as the EFA. Eligible applicants for each are provided to you in options one through four. Mr. Jim?
Yes, Commissioner Deluge.
For the first one, which is?
This one, which that committee?
First one's IOC. I'd like to appoint Renee McNeil.
Second, second.
Renee McNeil, moved, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All in favor? Do we take those in group? Do we take those in groups? Sorry.
amend the motion also to include Ben Watkins, since he wants reappointment?
Option one. So that's option one and two?
Okay. Options one and two, correct? All right. We'll move option one and two and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Commissioner Dozier?
Mr. Chair, we have relied, and I am happy to rely on Commissioner Deluge's good leadership at the EFA. Option three is Tom Proctor Jr. I would like to suggest Dixie Damwood in option four.
Longer term?
Is that for the 2020?
The term, Tom, one or?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Option three is Tom Proctor Jr. One of the two appointments for option four, I would like to nominate Dixie Damwood for that one.
I would like, if I could, I'd like to nominate Reginald Ellis for the other.
Did you second?
Yeah, I would second hers. Okay. On point.
I'll bring.
Dixie has some legal experience with the Heritage Grove project, which is pretty complicated, a lot of litigation.
That's fine.
And so she would be great. I would ask that she be assigned to the longer term, which goes to 2023.
Commissioner Dozier, you go with that?
Yes, amending the motion. Option three for Tom Proctor Jr., option four for Dixie Damwood until 2023, and Reginald Ellis until 2020.
Second?
And, thank you. And Commissioner Deluge, I'm, I'm glad we both got the same information about, you know, Miss Damwood. I think her experience in a previous firm, working on EFA issues, was really exceptional and something that we had not seen on the EFA before. So I'm excited for her appointment.
Let's do. So accepting the motion and seconded has moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign?
Quick comment, Mr. Chair.
Please, please.
The EFA is going through some transition. At some point, and I'd yield to staff on this, in the next six months, maybe before the year is out, if, I know there's an annual reporting process they go through, but it would be nice to maybe have whoever's running the show come by and just give us a quick update on where they are. Because there's a lot of moving parts, and I'm really pleased with some of the progress we've made. So I think you'd be happy to see where it's going. Anyway, so I'd ask at some point, at staff's discretion, that whoever you decide is appropriate come in, and I don't care if y'all just want to give us five minute update, but I think there's, there's enough moving parts there if it goes the way we hope it does. So, thank you.
Mr. Administrator, any other items you added during our break in between the meeting and returning for a meeting?
Not a chance.
All right, thank you. Mr. Attorney, some words from you. I, I heard the term ten from the diocese today. I think that may have been the round number related to the number of meetings that you are still obligated to attend and be a part of.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I actually do have a substantive.
Good, I'd like to hear.
You received from me electronically a memorandum this afternoon that indicates that we have received what I'm going to consider to be a settlement proposal in a piece of litigation that has been ongoing for 16 years. I have promised my staff that I'd like to finish it before I leave, but I'm not sure that that's going to take place. Nonetheless, we have a settlement proposal in the case of Leon County versus Johnny Petranis and his various corporate entities. It is something that I think you need to hear some additional background on and some analysis, which is not something I would like to do during a live public hearing on TV. And so therefore, under the provisions of 286.011 subsection eight, and I defy you to question whether that's the accurate statutory citation or not. Yeah, well, there might be more of that in the coming months. Anyhow, I'm requesting that we have an attorney-client privileged meeting, sometimes called a shade meeting, so we can openly discuss this among the board members and your administrator and the attorneys who are involved in the matter. I'm suggesting that, because I didn't have an opportunity to really brief you about that, I will try to do some one-on-ones with each commissioner to give you the background on how this process really works. But my suggestion or my request is to, A, agree to have such a meeting, because I have to make the request, but you have to agree to do so.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
I'd make a motion that we have a shade meeting, whatever the county attorney deems.
Very good.
And my suggestion is to do it the afternoon of your September 17th commission meeting. That's your next meeting day, and you have no workshops currently scheduled for that timeframe. So that would be at 1:30.
Is that a vote that we're supposed to take at that meeting? Herb, were you expecting us, just inform us of something?
You cannot vote at the shade meeting to do or not to do the settlement. You have to do that at an open public meeting. But we could bring it up at the public meeting that evening to vote yes or no.
Mr. Attorney, a point of clarification. Are you saying shade?
Yes.
Oh. You should come up with a better name.
Well, it's traditionally been the opposite of sunshine.
Okay. All right. So a motion has been made. Yes, Commissioner Lindley.
I would like some assurance that we can bring this on home. It's been going on for 14 years. I think we've brought these people to their knees. And I mean, I'll go along with this vote, but it has to end. And that's what I'd like to see. And 14 years is too long. And we have, I mean, we have an offer. So I'm going to vote against this.
On point, Commissioner Maddox.
Herb, remind me, because it's been, it has been 16 years. I think we've been dealing since we've been on the commission. Remind me, what exactly are we owed?
What are we owed?
Yeah, what do we, yeah.
Approximately $610,000.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Okay, on point, Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Proctor.
I understand the desire to just get this done. It's been going on a long time. I think it's our responsibility to do our due diligence. I'll support the shade meeting. And I just wanted to check before we ask too many questions, your desire, Mr. County Attorney, was not to get into a discussion tonight because the details of the case will be better served in our shade meeting. The reason for a shade meeting is for us to discuss attorney-client issues before reaching a settlement.
Yes.
So we have to do that.
Pros and cons. And the reason I was able to answer Commissioner Maddox's question is that number was provided to the court in open session, so.
No, I, just before we went on to any other questions, Mr. Chair, I would love for, I'm not going to call the question right now, but I think we should move to a vote for this, up or down, and save questions for later, either briefing or shade meeting.
All right. Commissioner Proctor, then we'll vote.
This is a process question. Will the defendants get an opportunity to speak to the board or are all of that handled through you?
The client, Mr. Petrandis and his spouse, for example, can talk to the commissioners. Their lawyer cannot, and they are not permitted to attend the shade meeting.
Okay. Well, after we've come out of the shade meeting and whatever comes before the board, do they get any due process, such as talking to the board about what's about to happen to them?
No, but they can do so. I mean, voluntarily, they can call you and if you wish to speak with them, then you may.
But they can't speak in a public meeting when it comes to the sunshine?
It depends on how you set that up, Commissioner. I mean, I can bring it up under my time that night, the 17th. You have another commission meeting a week later on the 24th and it could be theoretically an agenda item if that's how you wish it to be.
Right. I think it's important as a matter of due process, given the materials that we've read so far, that the accused get an opportunity to present. We've not heard their voices. I haven't heard their voices in an arena. And I think that somewhere in the Constitution, governmental takings before government takes, people ought to have the right to be heard. And on that basis and principle, I would ask that we set a process up that we could at least hear their voices.
I think at this time, we're just simply voting on the motion that you would meet with us.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
All right. So we'll move forward with that motion that has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Oh, motion passes six one. Sorry, sorry. Next up, any comments from you, something non-business related? Mr. Attorney?
Actually, I have no other matters to be brought before the board.
Okay.
Enjoying myself.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's agenda was simply an effort to ensure that the commission earned your summer break and I'm happy to inform you that you all did. And so please enjoy your break.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, I want to reiterate how happy I am about purchased built communities being funded. I think that's really important. I think some of you had attended the Chamber of Commerce Greenville follow-up meeting. Commissioner Deluge, I know you were there. And Mr. Proctor, with the 32304 summits that you've been leading, you know, many of us have been attending a lot of these summits or discussions over the last, you know, year or so. The talk about poverty and addressing poverty has been on the table, on the discussion table for decades. And it feels to me that we're finally starting to turn the corner and starting to maybe gain some momentum with community leadership on making some end roads. So I just wanted to recognize that and wish everybody a good summer recess.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I left something on my desk and I need to retrieve it to present it. May I please be excused for a moment to retrieve that item?
Okay.
For Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rang in instead of pushing the microphone. Forgive me. It has been a long day. We may have earned our keep, but that ain't nothing compared to our amazing staff and everyone else who has stuck with us and prepared the items. So thank you, Mr. County Administrator, for a good, robust agenda and everyone else who actually did the hard work that he had to read. Sorry, did I say that out loud? Uh huh. Okay, so we had a robust consent agenda this time. I had a number of questions that I talked to the county administrator about during briefing yesterday. I didn't want to pull these items, but these were two elements within the consent agenda that I wanted to tease out. First, we had an item number 11 on the inmate work crews. We have used, we have worked with inmate work crews, I will say that, from prisons and our detention center for a long time. And reading through that item and reflecting on the really good efforts our sheriff and others are making to bring workforce training into the detention center, whether it's barbering or others, we know some of the prisons are doing the same. I would like for us to explore options for a letter or some way to document good work and skills for the work, the inmate work crews. If in the item, it says that there are times when inmates will work with our people for a very long time and they gain good skills and they can be depended on. So, Mr. County Administrator, we discussed this, I could frame it as a motion to look into this issue and see if there is any way that we could support the efforts to provide and document workforce training for inmate work crews who are within the county departments and we could share that with others as well. Is that, did I frame it correctly?
That works for us.
Wonderful.
All right. Commissioner Maddox?
You need a motion, right? Ask a motion, right?
I got the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign.
Thanks.
Motion passes. Continue, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you. Agenda item 15 was a good update on the amphitheater support space and the agreement. Just a clarification, Mr. County Administrator, I got a text question about this. The agreement for construction planning of the amphitheater support space ran through the CRA, but the agreement for operations will be part of the amphitheater, existing amphitheater agreement directly between city and county.
That's correct.
Okay. Someone who had looked at the item asked me that question after briefing. I'm really, I'm excited to see this. I know Carrie Others has been working on this a lot. I just wanted to make a public comment that I believe this space looks and can operate different than any other city or county park. And I'm really looking for our staff and city staff to come back with an agreement that demonstrates the highest and best use and gets creative with this agreement. I think we've got some opportunities there, but we have to recognize that it's very different than doing a birthday party at Tom Brown or something like that. I don't think anyone's looking at it like that, but it is. So finally, Mr. Chair, I have just started looking at this issue and would like to ask for an agenda item fleshing out the move towards local governments requiring tobacco sales and vaping sales for 21 plus only. This was something that was pushed to the legislature. It will likely come back next year and local governments right now are looking at raising the age to 21. I think we received some information from American Heart Association. Some of you may have received that. I met with them. I will admit on camera right now that as a high school student that looked way older than I was, I absolutely could walk in someplace and buy a pack of cigarettes if I wanted to. I know kids can do this. And I'm hearing it may even be a benefit to, that was a really long time ago. Let me just say that. But I know that experience. I know it's challenging for store clerks and others. And I'm hearing that it may be of interest even to some businesses that, you know, it may be easier to be at 21 and the numbers are looking good for reducing youth tobacco use. Vaping is of critical concern right now. So I just would like to make a motion for an agenda item, looking at where we stand, what the legislation proposed was.
I'd second that.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded by Commissioner Deluge for an agenda item regarding raising or studying raising the tobacco, where it falls at. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just say, I think it is important for us to talk to retail partners, talk to law enforcement, talk to others. We need to get a full scope of this. Mr. County Administrator, I'm sure you would do that. I just wanted to mention it. That is all. I hope everyone has a really good few weeks until we reconvene and enjoy some of the wonderful offerings in Leon County. Thanks.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am circulating and I apologize to the board that I didn't get multiple packages of that. But what I'm circulating and I'm asking each board member in the sunshine to review is a request to attend the National Association of Black Journalists Convention, which will be in Miami, August 7 through 11. I know Commissioner Lindley is familiar with that body of journalists. I'm very much at home, being a communications major. That's in my background. But I'd like for the board's permission to attend that particular conference in August. So we have to, per policy of the county commission, seek the approval from the board to attend these conferences.
Commissioner Proctor?
Yes?
Commissioner Proctor, I'm going to be the bad guy here.
What's different?
Okay, I'm going to be the fiscally conservative one now, Commissioner Deluge, and say that, and say that.
She's not bad.
I believe it's our responsibility to make sure any travel paid for out of our accounts is germane to our county commission job. So I am sure this is an excellent, excellent conference, but I don't want to create a slippery slope that any conference we may want to attend is with, can be funded out of our budget. So I'm not saying no necessarily. I'm saying that I want to look for travel that is related to our county offices. Many people who serve have outside employment, so it may be related to that and not county business. So I'm going to butt into caution. I need to know why it's germane to a county budget.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make the motion that we approved the request.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to make the motion for you. I mean, Commissioner Proctor, you can go ahead and explain if you want to, but if he has in his budget and thinks it is something that could be a benefit for him and his district, I don't see why I'm getting in the way of him, him making that travel. But Commissioner Proctor, if you want to answer that question, you're more than welcome to.
With all due respect, Commissioner Dozier being fiscally conservative, and I am too. I'm a fiscal conservative. You may not know that. But I believe that this particular body of public servants, if you will, engage so much topic matter that is very similar to the experiences of people who live in District One. It's up to date. It's information likely that will talk about issues that have greater clarity than perhaps my local newspaper reports on. It teaches you media strategies, what are the trending methods of gaining voice or coverage. As you know, everything requires the media today. And, now I wanted to make sure you were comfortable. I mean, you asked me to, that's why I was responding.
I got you.
Okay, okay.
All right. Motion's been made and has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Yes, yes. My bad.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, my last item of the day. I want to wish everybody, thank you very much for your support of attending that event. Let me say to the commission, I'm going to miss the NACO meeting this year and, Deluge, only you could make me go there. And when I heard about those tremors, you know, from the earthquake, I knew, nope, wouldn't go in out there. So you guys have a great time. I wanted to ask this board for our potential review at our next meeting of a resolution that encourages our federal government to act a little more hastily with respect to what's occurring at the United States southern borders. I know that we don't have a facility that houses immigrants in Leon County, but I think that there is a facility within the state of Florida. And Herb, I wouldn't use the long arm statute, but I do note that the president of the Florida Association of Counties is here and to the extent that he is encouraged to, and the Florida Association of County is encouraged, and we've had congressional delegations that have come to Florida and gone to other states to look at deplorable conditions affecting humanity. In tonight's opening prayer, a preacher referenced Acts 10 and suggested in that prayer that a recognition that God was no respective person. And as a humane humanitarian act of a body that's progressive, ours, I would like for us to adopt the resolution and maybe staff would bring something back that would encourage policymakers, Congress, or whoever's the responsible party to make sure that those conditions are ameliorated and we can do better. So I offer that as a motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Can you rephrase the motion for us?
Motion for a resolution to, to end the inhumane conditions of our holding facilities here in the state of Florida and that we would send that to our congressional delegations that they would be strong supporters of processing the asylum application of immigrants. Something like that.
We have a motion regarding the resolution. Do we have a second? All right. Motion dies for lack of second.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I thank you all for a great meeting. Vince said that they were trying to tee us up to really be deserving of the break. And I want to wish each of you a safe and prosperous summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, I think you're next up.
Great meeting, Mr. Chair. This has been a long one, but you got us out expeditiously. There was a lot on the agenda, great conversation. Again, this is a big meeting for me, everything that I wanted to be on here was on here. So I appreciate the commission walking down that road of affordable housing and following through on the conversation that we had years ago. I do think, as Commissioner Minor said, the wheels are starting to turn in the way of us dealing with poverty as all the powers that be coming together to deal with that. Commissioner Proctor, I do note the comments that you brought up earlier about Title I schools and some of the school grades that came out. I do know that through my other position, that those teachers and administrators in those schools work very hard. But one thing to talk about.
I'll second that.
Yeah. But one thing they talk about in Commissioner Jackson, Mr. Chair, you'll probably be able to speak to this, is how sometimes it's hard to teach a kid when they hadn't had anything to eat the whole weekend. They come in on Monday. You know, sometimes it's hard for those kids to make it to school on time or they don't make it to school because they may have to stay home and keep their brothers and sisters. That can get in the way of making a good grade on their FSA. But does that necessarily mean that that student can't achieve? I say absolutely not. We have some brilliant young people in our schools.
Uh, we have some brilliant young people in our schools, Title I schools and all the schools in Leon County, and I believe in each and every one of them. So anything we can do at, at the county to support what the school board is trying to do in a way of, of propping up those schools that need the most help in our county, I'm, 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 I'm right behind and I know each one of you are too. So, uh, happy summer. Uh, happy break. See you guys, uh, those who are going to chamber retreat and I'll see some of you at NACO for those who are going, going. And, uh, again, good job, Mr. Chair, today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to know what time dial you were using for expeditiously, but.
I had seven thirty.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Lindley.
I'm going to help you with the expeditiousness and say, sayonara, everyone. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Deloge, Mr. Vice Chair.
Safe travels to everybody. Enjoy your break. Thank y'all for, uh, the nice send off for Brenda. She will be missed badly, uh, sorely. And Rebecca, if she's still here.